We call the Dune City Assembly of August 16th to order at 6:00 PM on... What did I say, 16? Um, Jamie, you wrote copies?
Certainly. Council President Susan Snow.
Here.
Councillor Melissa Stinson.
Present.
Councillor Rory Hammond.
Present.
Councillor Tom Allen.
Here.
Councillor Richard Olson.
Here.
And Councillor Robert Orr is absent and is unused. So, Richard, if you want to move down, you can.
All right. Um, please stand before the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the white flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I still move, but I'd like to make a point about the part about the reports, the industry reporter and the community wire reporter for people who are no longer in the council.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Yes, didn't catch that. And I believe there was going to be a motion.
I do have a motion to add to the agenda. I would like to add to the agenda in regards to the discussion that we're doing along in regards to getting the councillor, or excuse me, the mayor replaced in regards to what we would like to see done as the committee that is leading that. We would also like to put on the agenda in regards to the Dune City water issues.
What would you prefer to do first?
The committee would like to add some things in regards to the search for any mayor. Okay? You want me to go a little more in depth on that? Right, can we have?
Just be concise and clear.
Not that. Your business or our business? I'm not really sure.
The business. Can you hear? Very well. Can you hear?
Not very well.
Can we turn off the microphone? Are they on automatic?
God.
Sometimes it gets a bit bad.
I'll watch your ears. It's real away. I hope so.
Would you like me to read? Talk about what I just mentioned?
Yeah, definitely.
I want to put on the agenda in regards to the selection process of the mayor that we are, as the three individuals up here, Officer, or excuse me, Councillor Rich Olson, Councillor Tom Allen, and myself in regards to the process of how we're going to be doing that. We would like, also like to reopen it to people of the public that would like to run. We are requesting a written letter of why you want to be the mayor, an application, and a resume. We're also requesting that that be posted in the Sayuslan News on our outside bulletin board and also in the minutes with the camera. That way, the people hopefully watching the videos will also be hearing this. And then I also wanted to add the Dune City water issues to the agenda.
All in your business?
All. That would be all business on the water issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was a motion to amend, right?
Correct.
There hasn't been a second?
No, it hasn't been a second yet.
Second. Thank you. So we have, um, an updated agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
A discussion.
A discussion?
Well, the only discussion is the water issue. It's important enough to put that forward today.
Excuse me, could you speak up?
The water issue is a pretty big deal and I have some single packets and I was wondering if that should be put on the agenda today since it's a full agenda.
If it's not on today's agenda, it needs to be on the next agenda mandatory because there are some significant issues with the water in Dune City.
Is there a discussion?
Were we amending to include it or not include it this time?
I was just asking. Was included. Because I understand about the mayor portion that was your guys. But I was curious about the water issue being on here and I was hoping, I know we have, I don't think about putting things on the agenda calling councillors to talk about it instead of here.
I would like to talk about the water issues because I know I will recluse myself in regards to that and speak on, you know, as an audience also if needed. Um, there are some significant water issues around the Wobbling Lake and they need to be addressed because I worry about the welfare and the safety of the drinking water.
So there's a motion, a seconded motion on the floor.
The seconded motion or report? Yes, that those items were added to the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the new items.
So.
Is there a second?
Well, you need to vote on. She already made it, yeah.
After vote on the amended agenda.
Okay.
It's already been seconded.
Yeah, right.
Now it's a vote.
Yes. So all those in favor of the amended items?
Aye.
Both.
Okay, there's one opposed and I just carry it though. Okay, is there a motion now to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
So. All those in finger?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Discussion. I would like to have the receipts for the session and the councillor pulled from, and pulled because it says these are normal items and the minutes are quite lengthy and I don't have any changes to them. But I do have some questions to talk about the receipts of the session. Do look at the all items listed are considered as routine by Dune and will be enacted by one motion. And I want to discuss the receipts.
So you make a motion to remove the receipts of the session from the consent agenda?
Yes.
So there is a motion to remove the receipts of the session from the consent agenda?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It would be approval of the consent agenda without the receipts of the session.
I said amended.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. Good. I'm just trying to keep up.
Consent agenda does not have receipts of the session.
Actually, Mr. Bill, too. We can't ask about any of those sessions, Bill. But I'll ask you prior to some stuff.
No, well, it's removed with the consent agenda. So this is normally the time that you would now consider it separately so that you would have the question asked.
Will you consider that now?
Yes.
Now I gotta find my voice. So when I was looking for consent agenda, agenda on the receipts of the session, I just have, uh, I saw something about the school excise tax. What is that and we get a receipt for?
We, we collect the school excise taxes for them and then keep a portion for ourselves for doing the work and send the rest into them. So that's what the receipt is. The receipt is for the school tax and then we turn around and send them a check for the full amount less 4%.
The only other thing I have to ask you about is local. I said that lead award cities, is that just a normal dues thing? Is that something special?
No, that's a normal dues thing every year. So can you move to our?
I wonder, have we approved the bill that receipts the session, Bill?
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is 4%. Okay, before we get to announcements, I want to make the councillors aware that they all have Robert Bull's orders cheat sheets in front of them. We help this try to keep the, um, need moving and, um, so that we can get through a lot of information that we have and to try and work the, through the process of events going here. So, Jamie, announcements and correspondence?
Charter Spectrum announced that around September 13th, 2023, it will launch carriage of Lifetime Movies Network on channel 137 SD and channel 864 HD to SPP Select, TV Select Signature and TV Select Plus tiers of service. I don't know if that means it's coming down or it's going down. On Saturday, November 4th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Florence Event Center, West Lane Emergency Operations Group will present the 2023 Beat the Wave Disaster Preparedness Expo. Those interested in exhibiting or sponsoring the event can contact me at City Hall or Megan at Florence City Hall. And that's all I have.
All right, we have, next we have the consultation with Ross Morrison.
And I'm going to give you a call. Everybody wants to speak.
Okay.
I'm Ross, this is Jamie. I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Can you hear him?
Yes.
Very good. There you go.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm fine. I don't know if it's best if I just launched it on the first item or if you have any initial questions or anything you want to tell me?
Start with the first item and we'll ask questions.
Yeah, she said watch it. Yes, of the, following the items as they were listed on the agenda that I sent you, if you could go ahead and launch into that first one and then they can ask you questions, the council can ask you questions along the way.
Okay, great. So the first item is putting property tax on the ballot. Um, and so that, that issue is, um, the fact that Dune City does not have a permanent tax rate. And I understand that the question is whether you can and how do you get a permanent tax rate? And so the general, um, the general rule is a taxing district like the city that has not previously obtained the voter approval for a permanent tax rate may ask your voters to approve a permanent tax rate. So, um, if you have not obtained a permanent tax rate before, you can go to the voters and ask for them to approve one. Um, it is, it is a kind of a one-shot deal. So once, once the voters approve a permanent tax rate, that is then your permanent tax rate and with the emphasis on the word permanent. So once the permanent tax rate is established, you can't change it. Uh, so you could not go back to the voters to ask for a, um, an increase or even a reduction of that, that permanent rate once it, once it gets established. So, and then in terms of, of process, um, the, the Constitution says that, um, it should, this is a, a double majority vote. So if you put it on, on, on the ballot, it would require a, a majority of the qualified voters in the city to approve it unless you go out in November of an even year. So, um, for instance, the, the next opportunity would be November of, of 2024. Um, if you went out in November of 24, then it would just take a, a simple majority. But if any other, um, election besides November of an even year would require that, that double majority requirement.
So Ross, what you're, what I'm asking then is how often, that's your, that's probably the answer about how often we could ask for such a vote is, uh, uh, every, every one, uh, even years it would be a majority and odd years or whatever would be a, a double majority? Or how often can, uh, go? Staff had told, had mentioned earlier that we could not go back or maybe not be able to go back and ask for a property tax. So.
I brought it. Well, so you, you can ask until it's approved. Um, but then once it's approved, then that, that's your rule.
Okay.
How do, how do the counties and the states continue to increase your property tax if Dune City can't do that in another fashion? If they can't increase or decrease it once it's set, how are these other government agencies doing that?
Well, they're not. Uh, so everyone has a, those, those districts that have permanent rates have a permanent rate and that is their permanent rate for, uh, since, since measure 50 was adopted in, in 1997. So, uh, tax rates have not changed since 1997. Uh, there are other avenues to obtaining, um, so a, a city or a county can go out for what's called a local option levy, uh, which is an additional tax on top of the permanent rate. Uh, but that has to go to the voters. Uh, you could also adopt a bond measure and that essentially is another tax rate on top of the permanent rate. But a general obligation also, a general obligation bond also requires a, a vote of, of the, the electors.
So Ross, I have my notes about bond measures in particular. If Dune City went after a bond measure to support, uh, legal services or, or enhance the policing district for, for our codes and, uh, and go out and subcontract, let's say like the city of Florence or Lane County to do our, provide like a justice of peace or legal services for, so we can do our code enforcements locally. And how, how, what is the process for doing that? And then also the maybe process to do our accounting services?
I, so I didn't get the, the second part of the question, but the first part of the question was how, what's the process of, of going out for that local option levy? Uh, and you talked about, um, obtaining money for, for different operations and services that the city provides. Um, I, I believe that would not be a bond measure, but that, that would instead be a local option tax measure. Uh, and so you are allowed to go out for a local option tax measure of, uh, that would provide a tax, an additional tax rate for up to five years. Um, and that is, that is just a, a ballot measure that you put on, on the, on the ballot. Um, so it would involve the, the council adopting a resolution, calling for an election. Uh, and then we would work together to draft a ballot title that would then appear on, on the ballot. Uh, and the, and the voters would decide whether they want to approve that local option levy or not. And if they did approve it, then you would start to see that tax revenue from the county and it could last up, up to five years. And then you could, uh, after five years, you could renew it or you could not at the council's discretion.
Are public hearings appropriate for such measures like that?
Uh, sure, yeah, absolutely. Um, it's, a, a public hearing is not required, uh, but you could certainly, um, the resolution would be adopted at a, at a public meeting where you could take, um, public input if you wanted to.
I don't, uh, don't have any other questions about that, but we would be probably contract, uh, my thought would be contracting some sort of IGA to provide those services from somebody like Florence or Lane County to do, provide it locally. For instance, uh, Lane County now provides building code services in Florence for, for the county here. And that's an option to pay for some of these things and it's a short-term option, five years. So you hear about budget creep or tax creep? That would probably solve some of those questions. Yeah, let me answer my answers, answer my questions.
I, you know, I, I'll just add that, um, with, with the advent of, of measure 50 and measure five back in the late 90s that, that capped, uh, property taxes, the, the avenue of a local option levy, that, that five-year operations levy that we just talked about, um, that has become pretty common, a pretty common way for, uh, cities and counties and special districts. You see it a lot with fire districts. Um, and so there are, there are lots of examples out there of, of local jurisdictions seeking, uh, you know, 50 cents per thousand or a dollar per thousand, uh, of tax revenue to help support, um, either specific operations or, or general operations.
Any more questions on that subject matter? Next item, Ross?
All right, the next item is, um, uh, how to handle public testimony and input for items not discussed in the public, in a, in a public hearing. Um, so this, this is, uh, a, a pretty broad item, I guess, and I, I assume there's some questions. This is coming up for a reason. Um, but I, you know, I just made it the place to start is, is your, your agenda for tonight. Um, you have a citizen input provision on, on your agenda. Um, and you even have a, some, some subscript set that says, uh, public input is allowed for 20 minutes. Everyone gets, gets three minutes unless we've got too many speakers. Um, and I will say, um, that is, that is a very common and acceptable way to do it. Uh, I think it is very common for cities to set aside time at every regular meeting, uh, for general public comment. Uh, and it is also very common to place a limit on, on both the total time and the individual speaker time. Uh, I, I think that is, that is, uh, that is very common, a very common practice and it's an acceptable practice. Um, but I, I guess I will maybe even start with by saying, um, there is no statutory requirement that you have a public comment at your, at your, um, at your regular meetings. It is, it is a very, very common practice, um, but it is not a statutory requirement. There are, there are certain things that do require public hearings, like your budget. Uh, there's a statute that says you have to have a budget, uh, hearing. Uh, so you have to allow public comment. Uh, when you raise fees, you're supposed to solicit public comment. Uh, but unless there's a specific provision in state law that says, you know, for this decision, you need to hear public comment, there, there is no requirement that you have this, this general public comment required. Uh, I am, I'm certainly an advocate for it. I, I recommend you do it because I think it helps transparency and helps, um, public input on the process. So I totally recommend that you have a, a public comment period. Uh, but I also recommend that you have parameters on it. And I guess I would, I, I very much support what you currently have on your agenda right now.
So I have, I, I have a question for you. I know we usually ask for the resident's name and if they're a resident of Dune City. Is it also appropriate or is it appropriate to ask if they're not a resident of Dune City, if they're a property owner? And is it appropriate to ask them if they're, if they're a voter, a registered voter?
You know, I, I think, uh, so you can't require, you, you can't require someone give their address. Um, and you, you, you know, you really can't even require that they tell you that their real name. Uh, if someone wants to come up and say their name is, uh, Lance Armstrong, uh, you can't, uh, make them sit down and stop talking. So they can give you any name they want. Um, I, I don't really have a problem with you asking for their name and address as long as it's clear it's not a requirement.
What about the voter part?
Uh, but you, uh, being a resident, um,
Look, Bill, that actually, yeah.
I, I think you can certainly ask, but it, it needs to be clear that it's not a requirement. So if someone, uh, someone from Eugene can come to Dune City and, and speak and come to public comment just as easily as someone who lives in Dune City.
The reason why I ask that, Ross, because it's, we have so many, uh, uh, vacation homes that it's not for permanent residents. In fact, we probably have close to 200 people, homes that are, are vacation homes. And it's nice to know, uh, who's voting and make sure that we have the consensus of people who live here. And so, and we're, we're making, uh, decisions on people who don't live here that have own property here. And I was just wondering what the implications are. It's nice to know.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I totally understand the purpose of the question and that, and I, I think it's a legitimate question. I, I just want to be clear that, um, that the folks should understand that it's not a requirement, uh, in order to speak. And so you, you can certainly ask someone, but if they don't want to say or if they tell you the pound of things, um, you, you can't, uh, you still have to allow them to speak.
What sort of, uh, what sort of things that we are allowed to do? I know we have people arrested or something and that when we have somebody, a, a person intimidating a, a speaker or whatever, can we turn those, the video or things over to the district attorney or somebody like that to, to, to handle things of, for intimidation or something like that? What are the rules for that?
Yeah, so the, the general rule is that folks have some pretty broad first amendment rights to, uh, speak to their, their elected officials. So, uh, if you open up the floor to public comment, um, people are allowed, uh, to show up and, and probably be rude and sometimes even be nasty. Uh, and that, that is their right. Um, so the, the general rule is that you can only take action against a speaker or an audience member if they were, if they are actually disrupting the meeting. And so, so what's an example of that? An example of that, uh, of what is not disrupting the meeting is if, uh, someone in the back holds up a sign and says, you know, uh, down with the mayor, vote the mayor out. Well, you know, someone is allowed to hold that sign up. It's not really disrupting the meeting. It's, it's not nice, it's not pleasant. It's, it's, quite frankly, it's rude. Um, but being rude is not disruptive. And so someone is allowed to do that. But if, if there is someone in the audience that is yelling and refuses to be quiet and is actually disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is, is, is being so loud and boisterous that you can't get anything done, that, that the council can't hear each other, that the mics aren't picking up the, the actual speaker, well, that person is disrupting the meeting and you can, you can have that, ask that person to leave. Uh, you can call law enforcement and have that person escorted out. Um, or you can, you know, and I know you don't have your own law enforcement, so that ties your hands a bit. Um, so what you can probably do is you can, you can call the meeting adjourned and, um, reconvene at a different time and, um, and, and ask that person not to attend.
I more have a problem of being intimidated to speak at all, so it's, so.
Anything else?
I have a question. So, Counselor, from what I'm hearing, is that a party that steps up to speak who has no dog in the hunt, so to speak, will best in interest... I follow.
Next item on the, Ross has on there?
I, I, I think that we need to go into executive session for this issue because it's going to be discussion staff.
I think that's what he may explain, and I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Item C, Ross?
Okay, uh, so let, let me just, first, I, um, I just want to maybe conclude item two and, and, and just restate that, you know, I, I think the current process on your agenda is pretty sound. And so, and so what that really takes is, is, you know, whoever is, is, um, chairing your meeting, whether it be, uh, you know, the next mayor or a, a council president, uh, whoever's chairing the meeting really needs to control things and, um, and treat people fairly and equitably. And so, if, if one person, or if, if you have several people speaking, everyone gets to three minutes, uh, and you, and you treat people the same, uh, and then get on with your, your council business. Um, if, if, if council, if these public comment periods drag on and on, um, then it really is disrupting you as, as a body from doing your business. Uh, and the public, uh, really doesn't have a, a right to disrupt your business. They need to sit, it's a public meeting, they can sit and watch, and, and I, I'm all for being transparent. Uh, and they get to come and watch you do your business, but they get to, they get to sit back and watch you do your business. And, um, the public comment period should just be a, a discreet portion of your agenda. Um, so, all right, thank you for listening. Uh, I will get off my, my high horse on that issue. Um, so, uh, the third item was discussion regarding staff appointment and turnover issues. Um, I'm, I'm not totally sure, uh, what the genesis of this item is. Um, and I guess maybe I will start by saying, uh, the council can certainly have, uh, general policy discussions about, um, employment, uh, issues and, and employment policies. Um, and you can have those discussions in a public meeting, and that, and that's appropriate for the council to consider, uh, you know, retention issues, how do, how do we retain, do a better job retaining employees? How do we do a better job hiring employees? Um, what are, what are our policies on these issues? Those are all very appropriate conversations for the, for the, the council to have in a, in a public meeting. Uh, but to the extent you want to discuss, uh, an individual employment situation, like an individual, uh, employee or an individual employment matter, uh, those are issues that we, we really need to, um, tee up, uh, for you and, and work with you and figure out the best way to handle those. Um, and often those conversations are had in, in executive session. Um, and, uh, if, if we wanted to go into an executive session on an employment matter, there are some rules and, and timelines for, for doing that. Um, and in the personnel world, um, if we wanted to go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee or, or complaints about an individual employee, uh, we need to give that employee 24 hours' notice, uh, before we can go into executive session. So, um, I just wanted to set out those kind of, those parameters. Um, and I also wanted to identify, uh, the city has resources on employment issues. Um, uh, your, your insurance company, CIS, uh, provides a lot of pre-lost legal services on employment issues. Uh, they have HR, uh, professionals on staff that are willing to consult with the city and help you draft policies and help you review policies. Uh, that, that is, they are a great resource for you, and, uh, you know, you already pay your insurance premium. So, uh, you're already paying for the service, so you might as well use it. Um, and I also want to say here in, in Lay County, we have ElCog, uh, the Lay Council of Governments, and they are, uh, a, another local government here that will, uh, that has some HR experience, and they should, HR expertise. Um, they're, they're usually not free, uh, but they are, um, much less expensive than I am. Uh, and so, they, they, they have HR experience, uh, and they can come in and provide consultations, uh, and they can even provide some, uh, straight-up HR services for the city on a contract basis. So, uh, the city does have resources in this area, uh, if you want to get your policies up to step. Um, so I, those are just some general thoughts on this, on this item, uh, but I, I assume there are some, um, some individual issues that you want to discuss.
We do have some, I, I certainly have some individual of discuss that needs to be done in an executive session, and we've actually tried doing that in July, and we tried in 1st of July and elsewhere. And we have, uh, because of the mayor situation, things, we have not been able to address that adequately. And the council, and I, I can't go around talking to the members of the council about these things because I know, I know that a lot of people knows about it and things of that sort. And it needs to be discussed, and we need to have a strategy, and if we can't do it, other than you.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I would, I would agree. If, if you have an individual employee that you want to have discussions about, uh, then let's, let's get together outside the public meeting. Um, you know, the, the council can certainly designate someone to, to speak with me or to speak with CIS. Um, and you can game plan how to, how to do that, uh, and we can help you, um, set and schedule an executive session, and we can make sure that you, all the proper notices are, are provided to the employee. Uh, and then we can, we can help you through that process. Um, but, you know, we, the genesis of that process is, is, is usually the council designating, uh, someone to, to work with outside council, uh, whether it's, whether it's me or, um, someone from my firm or, or from, uh, CIS in our pre-lost team, uh, and then, and then we, we work with that designated person, uh, to make sure all the, all, all the steps are followed.
Ross, who would be that person to make contact with you?
Well, well, generally, uh, I, I, unless you have, um, a, a rule or a policy in place, um, I, I generally believe that the mayor has authority to at least start that conversation. Um, but, um, a- as you are here admitting right now, I, I think you can, uh, you can discuss amongst yourselves designating someone right now, uh, to make that, that contact. So, um, you, you sitting here, uh, right now, could, uh, make a motion to authorize the, the council president to reach out to, um, CIS, pre-lost legal, or, or, or me, um, to, to start a, a conversation on, on, on an employment issue.
I'll make the motion that it should be the, either the mayor, if, when we get one, or the council president in absence of the mayor to handle that situation.
We can't, we can't wait for the mayor. And Ted, I'm one happy to have the council president, uh, do it. It, it needs to be done, and we have, uh, we have already exceeded far more times. And the previous mayor did spend some time, he had some, had some, uh, track, traction on it, but none of it's passed on.
That's what I was mentioning, it would be the mayor or the council president in absence of a mayor, so to handle that.
I'll second your motion, and we can, if, if you're talking about the council president.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, yes, I agree, there's a lot of things that we need to get straightened out this far as employment for Dune City. And so, um, we do need to work that and figure out a strategy for employment now. And I would say, any questions that the council has, if they would let me know their questions so I can make sure I have everybody's input, that would be great. Because we all have concerns.
My, yeah, please, before we ask for the questions, I mean, probably need to, we need to do it because we can't really, it's a matter of public record, using that sort. And I think we need to talk about those things, because some of them might need to be gripped, so, yes.
Well...
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll send, I'll send, but I know...
Don't have a starting place, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm just worried about public records. Heard anybody, heard, heard anybody's rights.
No, don't want to do that, that's why they turned us on phone.
So, you're going to contact him?
If I may, I, I, I apologize if I'm speaking over someone, but, um, I, I just want to maybe ease some concern with the, the council as a whole, you know, the, the point of, the point of delegating an individual, um, i- is not to cede any authority, um, some, any broad authority to that individual. It's just to get that conversation started, uh, to start working with, with legal counsel in terms of following the right process, um, getting an executive session called correctly, uh, and then bringing things back to the whole council in, in an appropriate setting. Uh, so, we're, we're not, we're not asking for any authority to make decisions. Um, the council is still the decision body. Um, we're just, we're just, uh, finding an individual's project.
Any other questions?
All right, um...
We're through with Ross, huh?
Thank you, Ross, I appreciate your time.
Absolutely, I'm happy I could participate, and it was good thanks to hear your voices, and, uh, best of luck on the rest of the meeting.
And I will be calling you.
Very good, all right.
Thanks, Ross.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Or, 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 uh, our insurance fortress company.
See, see.
Now, is that safe?
See, yeah.
See, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
New business? The pine gate for the roads?
Actually, that's old business, but...
It's under new business.
Yeah, but it's still under new business because you didn't really, you, all you did was table it. Uh, this was the agreement that the county sent to the city asking that we take over management of issuance of permits on their, their roads for events, just for special events only. And we already have an IGA with Lane County to help with maintenance when they're available.
So what does this do? With IGA, if Lane County wants us to get permits from our area instead of employing the Lane County, is that what they're saying?
Exactly. For example, the triathlon, they have to close, well, they interrupt Canary and, and, and Clear Lake during the triathlon. They have to have a permit to do that. It would be up to the city to get all of the information on what they want and, um, get, and make the decision whether that is something that, and make sure that they're, you know, complying with everything that they're supposed to comply with when the day comes. And it would be, yes, up to us to issue the permit and then turn around and send the money to them. Um, and we would have the right to add on something for our troubles, if you will, to the fee. So that we still send them the full fee, but we get paid for issuing the permit and doing the research.
Okay, that would be my question is, if you, if you're doing all this research, your time has to be paid for.
Right.
There has to be a quid pro quo there somewhere, I would think, with some of your staff is good, isn't it?
Right.
Well, the only two events we seem to have involve Darlings Marina and the triathlon. And where the triathlon is ours.
I'm sure the county would be open to letting us, or us, or something.
I would think so, but on the triathlon, they don't charge us, so... I'm pretty sure that's a, a given tip right there.
I guess the question is, is with the limited staff, do we want to take on another item, uh, that the county can do? Granted, an individual asked to go to Lane County to obtain the permit, but with their new permit services in Florence now, you can call and make an appointment and accommodate that there. So do we really want to add on to the staff?
This would be going for two years, too.
What?
It's only for two years. The agreement would only be for two years.
So, I, I know that the mid offices for building permits isn't for other permits?
I have no idea, I, I don't know what it's for.
Given that, I believe it could still be done online, so...
Probably, I don't know.
So, we haven't, I, I don't, this is, we haven't made a motion on the table, and that's all, I don't know if appropriate to do the discussions, but the only advantage of this is that the city would know what's going on, where the county would, I don't know if they'd tell us or not, so...
Does the county notify us?
Never.
Well, like, like our event is notified by the fire marshal, the sheriff's office, Dune City, and everybody's notified, so... And it's all signed off.
So is there a motion?
I guess it does for my motion.
There's no motion on the floor either way, so...
That's fine.
IGA, it will, uh, just, as I put it, since I'm used to terms from back, you should die in committee.
Die in committee.
All right, um...
So, I, I make a motion, uh, I said this is a new business under like, letter for me requesting items. So, my motion is that the mayor poll council members to make sure items are put on the agenda and etc.
Okay, is that item personal, so you want to do it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Um, the next item is, uh, there's some items that Councilor Hammond would like put on the agenda. I think there's some good things on there, excuse me, but I think that other people have good things, too. So, what I want to do is open up items to be put on the agenda to other council members who might have items, as well as the public. Um, because there might be things that are concerning the public that we haven't thought about, and so I would like to open it up to that.
Well, I, well, I'm pointing where here. My, my letter was to the mayor to put something on the agenda, and my request was that we, so he would poll. I wasn't asking these to be specifically, I wanted him to poll everybody and make sure that we, we just follow that.
Well, and that's my way of polling, is I want input from everyone of what should be on the agenda. Um, that's my way of, of polling is to find out what people want on the agenda, wanted, what their concerns are, and what they want us to talk about.
So, we're, this is close to the public, or you're going to put this up, you're, you're asking to put this on the agenda? See, this is a, this is an internal thing, it's not asking the public. We, we have, we have a process that, of, of putting things on the agenda.
We do, but I would like to have the public idea of what goes on the agenda also because I do believe they have, there's things the residents want us to talk about that we have not thought about. So if they want to put something together in writing and send it to Jamie, um...
So...
Before the, the first of the month of our meeting, because we need time to get things together, I would not mind doing that.
So, again, as a point of order, that we, the, the, the motion is how, if you want, if the public sends letters in... sends letters in, and, and we have these, all of you put on the agenda, you have the right as a mayor to do that, and what, what, and the process, and that's, and people do that all the time, and I don't have a problem with that, I think that's great, but when it comes to the council members, we have, we, it, it's like, uh, council, we, we need to talk to two members and, and call you and things like that, and all I'm requesting is that you poll the council to put items on, on the agenda, because we don't, and if, and I think that you can perfectly say, I don't care, I, I'm glad, I want, but I want the public to talk to you and put things on the agenda. People talk, talk to me and want to put things on the agenda.
I understand.
But I have no input to that, because it's done by staff of the mayor, and so all, all I'm asking, and, and we have to do it.
And so I even ask you.
When we do it once a month, and I want to do it, I want it to be polled before you do it, instead of afterwards.
I want to, my idea is to, which I got from your letter, is, and I will restate it, is that I would like people to give input to me of things that they would like on the agenda, and, as well as the public, and to do it by the first of the month during the next meetings, so that we have time to get information together. That is why I put, the only reason I put that on there is because your information you gave, gave me this idea that it would be better that way, because we need input from everyone. Everyone has different ideas, and those ideas are important.
So my motion, my, my motion, I, 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 I know that, I, I know that you, you managed the meeting, it's not your motion, it's my motion, and it dies on the second, that's great, but my motion is for, for the mayor to poll council members for items to put on the agenda. That's my motion, that was the point of that when this showed up here.
No, that was not the point, and I put this on the agenda, and that was not the, the point of it, but if you liked that motion, you, you made that motion, but I had to explain why I put that on the agenda, because I put it on the agenda, and that was the reason why.
Yeah, remember, maybe postpone the, the matter until it can be discussed more appropriately in a more appropriate location and time, please?
Okay.
I second that motion.
All right.
So that was postponed motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Oh, you did that, that's a motion on the floor?
There were, there was no second, so it dies of the second, and then Counselor Olson basically made a second motion that was seconded, and we can vote on it, is that what you're saying, table it? Counselor Stinson was asking to table it.
Yes, so Stinson made that motion, and Counselor Olson seconded it.
Correct.
So all in favor?
Aye.
And that was to table?
Yeah.
Correct, yes. Okay. The next thing under new business is, um, the selection process for the committee for the mayor.
Thank you so much. We had our three individual counselors that met in regards to the discussion of how we want to proceed with the election, or the, the cho, the choice of who we want to represent our, our citizens in this town. We are asking that if there's anybody else in the public that would like to become a mayor, or be put into the running for the mayor, to please submit an application, submit a resume to Dune City, we're asking that they be submitted by, uh, the fifteenth of September. That way we can discuss it, hopefully, at the next meeting on the, the selection process. We want to get our public's opinion in regards to the process selection, so if you have a letter that you would like to have something addressed, please send that in.
By what time?
By September fifteenth.
Then, form a motion.
I'll put it forth as a motion.
Sir, I'll put a question.
Any discussion?
Yes, how long is the term for the mayor, the position?
His, his, uh, reelection would be up in 2024.
How many years?
No, this, this selection process only goes till his, um.
Terms.
Terms up, so it would only go till 2024, otherwise it's four years.
That's what I want to know.
No.
Two years.
Two years.
Counselors and boards.
Counselors and boards.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, that person would have to run again?
Correct.
In the, in the time?
Correct.
If they wanted. If they wanted, yes.
But I think we're, we're, Mr. Hammond had a call for question. So that's asked the vote, where the details, I mean, we already, so that was a question for the public that we probably had to do our business, and, and so I call for the question, which is, a's or n's?
May I ask for a vote? On the floor, I.
You did.
No, not on, not on this issue.
You did not.
Not, not on, and, yeah, it was extended, molest, what he, he was moving is.
Second, then you vote. Then we wait to vote.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, call for the vote.
All right, ask for discussion, you can write, okay, now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any name? Any opposed, okay? Okay, old business? Record number two fifty-nine?
Well, uh, we got a number, item nine says citizen input, and I have not discussed in the public hearing.
I jump right ahead.
It's easy.
Citizen input, do we have the, any, anybody that wants to speak?
I didn't, I didn't see anything on the sign-in that said, would you be willing to speak?
No, it, it didn't indicate that, yes, there was not two separate signing sheets tonight.
So this is for citizen input on items not discussed in the public hearing, so that's things that are not on the agenda?
Not the agenda.
Do we have anybody online, Wally?
Doesn't look like it, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if there's anybody that wants to speak on things that are not on the agenda, you'll have three minutes, and I will put down the list to see if anybody wants to speak. Uh, Wally?
Yeah, I'd like to get from Counselor Stinson, if she can elaborate on the difference between senior water rights and junior water rights, and how that applies to Dune City.
I would also ask for, do you want to explain that as the city administrator, or the definition?
This, this is input, we aren't allowed to, we can only listen to you at this point in time.
Wally, can you email me, and we'll talk about it? I'm not sure, senior and junior?
Okay.
Oh, no, I have, it definitely exists.
Those, those, they do exist.
Yeah, in agriculture, I'm not sure if it applies to domestic uses, but anyway, we'll, we'll talk.
Here.
So to clarify, citizen input, we listen to you, we cannot respond, so sorry about that, Wally.
It's fine.
I agree, Ben Gold? I think Gold, oh, my, is that wrong?
Oh, I'm here, but I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Carol? No? Loretta?
No.
Cindy Goldstein? Rapunzel?
No.
Robin?
No.
Tina Johnson?
Um, I wanted to say something about the short-term rental, would that be under old business day, or would that be now?
That would be later, when we talk about the short-term.
Okay, no.
No, it's just, it's just. So they're co-discussion.
Oh, there's no discussion later, so.
Is this for us to discuss?
This is citizen input on things that are not on the agenda, so Jamie, how do we handle that?
I think she just wants to read a letter into the record.
Okay.
But I'm not positive about that, you do not have to take anything, it's not a public hearing, it's just a discussion, and there's no requirement to take a public comment.
Hey, Tina, when you have?
Hi.
You're attending, so.
Well, I turned the letter in, I brought it in here on June thirtieth.
It's in your packets tonight, I believe.
It should include also attachments and pictures.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, for those of you at the June twenty-ninth meeting, I had talked about the sewer issues located at eight-three-nine-twenty-five Cloud Nine Road, a short-term rental property that is on Woolhink Blank, and only accessible via our access road, which runs through our property, and kind of as a recap, we had purchased our house in two thousand eighteen, at the time there was a couple living there, um, she worked at Peace Health as a nurse, he was construction, they had two adult children living there, um, they were told, they'd lived there for seven years and had to move, because the new owners, um, said that they could make more money on a short-term rental, so all of them ended up moving to, um, Ritzport. Okay, so it began, came a short-term rental, problems began immediately with the short-term renters, since it's listed online as Grandpa's Lake House, under approximately nine different short-term sites, it has a very high occupancy rate, originally it stated it could sleep anywhere from ten to twelve people, depending on which of the nine sites you were reading, it's, now states ten, it's listed as four bedrooms, three bathrooms, plus a sofa bed, um, but it, what is not mentioned is that on the property of perhaps eight yards from the garage is an additional dwelling that has another bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom. This dwelling is occupied by a tenant, whose only job is to take out the trash, according to him, they do have property management, who told us, when we were finally able to get a hold of them, that they're about forty minutes away, if you call them, you'll get a recording, as they are out of their office from four P M. to ten A M. the following day, the times of the problems, usually late-night parties usually arrive. We have been told that we need to contact the courneers, my last conversation with John, who owns the property, did not go well, one of their guests stripped our boat after one night of their loud partying, additionally, we've since spent over twelve thousand dollars fencing in our yard to keep our property and our dog safe, since it is a dog-friendly, um, short-term rental, finally, we've had to post signs, because one of their guests hit our dog driving over the speed limit up and down our access road. We, along with several other neighbors, filed numerous complaints over the years, in one short period, I believe nine were filed, so Dune City fined them for all of the noise, trash, parking, partying issues, theft, and potholes created by the heavy boats, trailers, R Vs, from this particular rental. Now, in March, my husband and I noticed a terrible smell coming from their property, we walked down and saw the open sewer pit, we'd sent a picture, my husband sent an email on March twenty-ninth with attached pictures to Dune City, the septic tank is now being pumped out every two weeks, this started on April seventeenth, and they just pumped it out again yesterday, every time it leaves a very foul smell, I'm attaching the correspondence from the owners, courneers, and Jamie Mills, that was obtained from the Lane County website, and I highlighted certain sections that I feel interesting and pertinent, so this is quotes, because you have the place advertised as sleeps eleven in one place and sleeps twelve in another, that would mean the city needs reassurance from the county experts that the existing septic system with a one-thousand-gallon tank can handle the additional loading, and the soils on which it is placed can as well, when Hannah, the wife that owns the property, indicated you were contemplating reducing the number of overnight guests to be allowed, under the current language being discussed, if it is less than ten, you probably wouldn't need to get change, um, in the authorization from the county.
Your three minutes are up, we have your letter.
Okay. Well, that's too bad, because they were fined five thousand dollars, but they have twenty years to pay it, from my understanding, so.
Thank you for that input. Bob Sibley? Charles and Sally?
Bang.
Bang?
I'm unsure how you're going to handle the short-term rental being one of the old business items, along with citizens' input, but basically, I, I have really looked into the situation, it's still a mystery how even got to have a short-term rental, because short-term rental's not something that you can just automatically, without citizens' input, go ahead and just dive into it, you look at other cities, like Lincoln City, look at Coos Bay, where they basically had realized, what the heck, this is a big, this is a big problem for everybody, so they reached moratorium status, where they said, nothing's going to happen here until we get this resolved, and I encourage you guys to do the same thing, it's a big, it's a serious deal, Dune City isn't designed for this kind of an operation, but we have a nice place to live, it's wonderful, everybody loves it here, but this other thing is really bad, particularly when you don't have the type of support, you don't have security for the people who are, who are residents or occupants, you don't have a police department, you don't have any other good, good, uh, security devices, it's, it's a matter of, like access down the Dune City roads, where if trailer people come in with, you know, these, um, A T Vs and things of that nature, and they all have boats or A T Vs, if, if they don't have them as they're occupying the unit, they're going to have guests that do, it's going to jam up all of the, the roads, the fire department's going to be basically irritated, unable to really take care of emergencies, you're going to have emergency, you're going to have something really bad happen, there's also testimony by other people that have said they've got problems, there's lots of problems, I worry about the lake, I worry about the sanitation, I understand that Lane County's not happy with Dune City, what they're doing for protecting the citizens and the environment, and I think you need to just basically chill out, take a, take a look at what's happening in other places, get citizens' involvement, get in people that have expertise in other, other areas, where you just have to make this a big deal, I think you should basically terminate, cease and desist anybody that's currently got, uh, licensing, because they haven't done it the correct way, and fifty dollars a month a year for some kind of a permit is chicken feed, we can't afford to do that, pay somebody fifty, give fifty dollars to spend three thousand, ten thousand dollars worth of labor, but enforcement is a problem, until you can solve the enforcement, the security, uh, the, the maintenance of the issues, securing, securing the lake, I think you've got to go get into a deep, uh, you know, issue of trying to solve the whole problem, and get community involvement, this is bad for Dune City, period.
Okay, Neil Nichols? Steve? Ross Holtz?
Yes, can I give my time to this lady to finish?
Well.
No.
Can you finish reading the letter?
They have the letter.
We have the letter.
Okay.
And then?
No, I would finish her letter, but you won't let me.
We have it, we.
It was, it was also read in, uh, read some very similar on the twenty-first.
Alan Stone?
No input.
Jerry, good morning.
Have we got any plans for, uh, if we have a fire in this area? Do we have any evacuation or any?
No, sir. No, we don't have anything actually, right now.
And we got any something?
We even had an access.
Been working on it for years.
Okay, Don Anderson?
Here, yes. Just, I'd like to, to, uh, have a, a letter added to the public records, uh, this was sent to the, uh, the mayor and the councilors on August sixth, I'll read it real quick, uh, regarding short-term vacation rentals, dear honorable mayor, and councilors, lately, the city councilor meeting has been dominated by discussions related to short-term rentals for vacations or S T Rs, I'd like to offer the following suggestions, the S T R is a privileged use, not a property right, in residential zoning, I suggest you halt any new S T R permits for at least six months, or such time an acceptable ordinance is created, the term S T R is being added to Division one-five-five-point-two of the Development Code, the addition of the term has derailed the adoption of needed revisions to Division one-five-five, and it's become an item of contention, Division one-five-five-point-two is commercial uses, an S T R is a commercial use in a residential zoning, and must be regulated as such, it should be required a special use permit, and septic systems must. and septic systems must be reviewed and potentially upgraded. All current STRs should be revoked immediately until the septic system is approved by Lane County. Dune City staff has been notified by Lane County that existing STRs may not meet the commercial sizing standards and should not be allowed. There have been multiple septic system failures associated with the STRs in Dune City. This is both a public nuisance and a life, safety, and public health issue. Implementing the suggestions will have three positive effects. Eliminate much of the public outcry over STRs in Division 155. Eliminate the life, safety, and public health concerns due to failing onsite sanitation treatment systems, which impact the surface water, and allow enough time to gather meaningful public input into crafting of an STR ordinance if one is desired. Sincerely, Ed McGuire, Dune City Planning Commission. So this is from your plan and saying that there's an issue. If you haven't received a copy of it?
We have one.
I have got it, it's okay. Thank you.
Tina Nelson?
I'm just taking a lot of. I'm sorry, did I inhibit?
We can't, didn't hear you.
Hey, so I'm just taking a lot of good notes. I'll hold my comments till next meeting.
Linda Roberts?
It's in regards to the same thing, but it's two months out. And since that two months on the vacation rentals, there's been two added that sleep like 16 people. And on my street, the person that applied for it has been halted. And I'm wondering why we have to pay for permits to cut branches on our property, and nobody's paying for permits to have everything wrecked on the lake? And I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering why some people do get to have it and some people don't, and why they allowed that to happen within the two months that all this chaos has happened.
You want to share with a question? Or call it?
Not mail?
No, that's all right. I don't need to do it over.
Jeannie Jackson?
Give my time to other people who want to speak about their issues.
I can't hear.
I said I give my time to other people who want to speak about their issues, certainly, you know, some of the people.
Right. Geneva Jackson?
I kind of feel the same way. I'm, I'm concerned about the financial status of the, of the city. And I know we're going to have a report. As long as people, everybody can get a copy of the audit. I don't care. That's all I want, that's all I'm here for.
Okay, Ted?
I'll wait.
Let's hope that we can count on my left. Did I miss anyone? No public hearings, no executive session. So we go to whole business? The report on, on 259?
259, as you recall, you referred back to the planning commission. The planning commission considered accepting it back, agreed to accept it back to look at just the comments that were made in the public hearing, in the letters, and the comments that, that staff had included on the copy that went to you. And they are in the process of getting ready to get started on. No, that's just a.
Okay, we do staff report on the audit report.
I gave you all a copy of the management's representations of fiscal affairs as required by the Oregon State Regulation. And it will be after, after the Counselor Hammond's memo. And also is the memorandum in reply to those responses and to those concerns raised by the auditor. You want me to briefly explain each one?
I, I read the report. The answer to the question I have, or I guess I don't have, it's all this, I have to make a motion or something. I'm thinking, having a motion to say, I was.
Well, this is as a result of a request that was made by Counselor Hammond. And I'm glad he made it because I did, I am not an accountant, and I have no financial background. So to come in with absolutely no training and have to learn, that's what I'm doing, and I learned a lot.
So one of the motions last August was for QuickBooks training. And I'm almost, I'm under the firm conviction that we probably need to figure out how someone would pay for professional accounting services instead of have the staff do it. It's not, it's not. She signs checks, the mayor, the signs checks, and I don't think it's appropriate for him to be doing the accounting. So we need to, we need to solve that and.
Accountant should do it?
Or bookkeeper or something. I mean, I know.
I farm out payroll, that's.
I'm going to do the payroll, but.
And then I have to come back and put it back in, put it into QuickBooks.
So normally, when checks are written, where I'm from, was you know the accounts that they're putting in when you write the check, and when it's countersigned. So, and I, I ran, ran my departments. I knew how that affected my budget. I knew how much money I had, things like that. And, but I did keep the accounting. It was always a report to me.
That, that is not the one making the changes. This accountant is.
Yeah, I understand.
The one that does our audit is the one who does the change.
I understand. But I'm saying that if, if, it's probably a service that we should contract out. And.
That's fine with me.
Well, well, it's, it's not, you're, you're, it's not your real house. It's not, staff, staff has lots of things to do. And I, I think we would do this, it just needs to be done better or differently.
Or differently.
So I don't know how to make that a motion because we need to do that. We need to do something about that.
To state in here before, because accusations are being made publicly that I don't, that I have allowed the city to go well into debt, which is not true. We have one fund that we borrowed money from another fund to cover. That's what we have. Because the fish screens ended up costing us a lot more money, and we didn't even know we were going to be required to put them in. And that therefore took the water fund down to, I think, a negative number. And so we, and we're not allowed to have that. So there had to be a, a loan from another company that was budgeted for, from another fund. But what I did learn is it couldn't come from the fund that we took it from.
I noted the correspondence also about, we have a budget committee, and the budget committee had had some requests to do things. And there's, there's, the budget committee is to see and plan for what we spend and how we spend in the future. And then there's the audit function. That's not the function of the budget committee. The audit function is the function to make sure that it's, the things are right, so the reports are right, and that, that there's. I, I don't think, it's not about dishonesty, it's about accuracy. And they got to certify that this is true. I've done audits. And we need to go, four years ago, I made a request for, I asked all the councilors if they knew what the checkbook balance was. How much was it free cash? How much was budgeted or unbudgeted? And I, and one of the reasons why I wanted to be councillor is because I wanted to be able to follow and talk through that. And we still haven't done a very good job with our budget process in terms of how, I noted that. And I, I saw that we discuss unclassified accounts. There, I, I, the report that we wanted from the budget committee, what I wanted from the budget committee, was the status of all the accounts at the end of June 31, so we can review the last year of the budget committee. And if we missed that, we're supposed to do that in July. And it's now mid-August. And then we could see if we're over, under, and maybe this is, these accounting issues that we have might have shown up sooner. In fact, actually, what brought it up was wouldn't we have the budget committee in the aids? And so we need to have the budget committee convene and make sure that we're on target. If we, and I, I need to know. I mean, I want to know. I'm sure you want to know. How much, how much we're over budget? If we're under budget? How much free cash we have? So we can throw a party or not? No, you understand, we don't know. We can't, we can't, I can't, I can't get a thing and say, we need to supply disaster relief for somebody or something. We, we don't know what our numbers are. We never will until we get that.
And I agree, we need to have a budget committee meeting. I requested one in June when the meeting was canceled.
Actually, I wanted it in July because we want, I wanted year-end stuff. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I want year-end.
Data for the year.
So we need to have a budget committee meeting in order to figure out whether or not we can find the funds to be able to put this together and be able to have this done by, on how's I say it?
Yes, since you've obviously don't trust my work, yes.
Jeremy, I don't think you said we don't trust your work. We just may have set you up for failure. Please look at it that way.
That's, that's true. We have.
It may not have been failure on any part, but not giving you the appropriate tools to do a successful job. So I don't want you to be down on yourself at all.
It's about, it's about guidance.
Correct.
From the council.
Correct.
Well, and it's all about training, and all the training that needs to be done for QuickBooks will take you a very long time.
Then we need to discuss if that's appropriate. But that, I, I think that's appropriate for the budget committee and do whatever the budget committee has for recommendations. It's not about auditing. It's about reporting.
Well, when the record data house paying for that person's.
That's true.
Audit to do it, where is the money at? Where do you come from? And, you know, can Lane County do that for you?
Well, I don't really.
And of course, none of us want that. That's why we came to city. But okay, that means we have to raise taxes or start a tax. I think that's where we're headed.
So, Tom, I agree with you. One of the reasons why I asked for the attorney to discuss about ballot measures and property taxes and things of that sort. One thing I forgot to ask him is if we put together a ballot measure for a five-year tax or something like that. I know that after we published the ballot, put on the ballot, council cannot talk about it. I, I understand that we can't say anything about it. I guess we can answer questions. But one of the things in putting that together, I wanted to ask him, is it appropriate that we actually allocate money and hire or like have the former mayor and a former council member do the PR for this stuff during that time? Is that appropriate? And is it correct to do? Because the biggest problem with not selling the last one, and I, I believe that was the wrong thing to do now that I found out what it was about, that to sell what we're doing so people can be informed and make a good vote, yes or no. And we can't talk about, so is it appropriate? Can we hire, you know, put expenses to that, hire for that?
So Jamie, if we need a budget committee meeting, so is there a time we could suggest for a budget committee meeting?
I think almost all of your members are here tonight. Almost all of them. You guys, you guys are the ones that we have the trouble getting together.
Any recommendations from the councilor?
Well, I don't have a look at that. I, whatever's appropriate, I'll try to make it.
Okay, I'll settle on.
Okay.
Just tell me one thing, evening or afternoon?
Evening. Evening for those people.
Okay. Thank you. Had there been serious problems with the audit? He would, I mean, the report that he sends to the state would have said so, and I would have heard from the state. So there isn't, and we're not in debt. I don't care how many times you say it, some people don't believe it. But we are not in debt. We have a fund that did not bring in enough money to cover its expenses. So we borrowed money, which the auditor did take from the general fund and not from the street fund. So he did it properly.
So the general fund is unrestricted funds? Or if I say unrestricted?
Yes, it's unrestricted.
So our, so is it in our cash account? How much of the cash available on budget?
I have the numbers in the other room. If you, I can tell you by the end of the year, by getting the audit.
Well, well, I, I think that.
And it's on the little corner up in the corner.
I think it's appropriate to make a report that.
Oh, is that what you, well, see, nobody's asking for that stuff.
Well, I am now, so.
Okay.
All right. Let's go move on to unclassified account entries.
No, I don't have a report on that yet. There was one entry in there that was one that I had yet done. What it was, it was when we first found out the payroll. And they sent us the first checks that we had, and it would have been July, I think. But it didn't show up until September, and I don't know why. But anyway, they sent us the checks. And Lonnie was one of the ones who attempted to get hers deposited in the bank. And they, the bank refused to take it because they had not put the account number on there.
I think they reversed.
Or reversed the account number with the writing, with the routing number or something, but it wasn't right. And so I wrote another check for, for Lonnie. Did you give me the check back? You did, didn't you?
Yeah.
And I voided it. Okay. So that one was voided, and I issued another paycheck based on the same numbers that they had sent. Because they gave me a breakdown of the numbers.
Didn't that happen with this too?
No, it was mine.
Oh.
And mine was the other one. Only in mine, they kept the check. They said they had to return it to the, to.
To the issue?
CPA, or to the bank that came from, or, no, no, to Dune City. They had to return it to Dune City because it was a Dune City check. So, well, I am Dune City. Well, no, no, they got it through separately. So they kept mine. So I didn't get to void it. I did void the copy that was on it. They wouldn't accept mine. And so, this was all on Friday, of course. And so on Monday, I contacted the accountant's office and told them the problem. And they said, oh, well, we'll take care of it. It'll be fine. And so, next thing I know, I didn't get my check. My check, you know, was voided already.
What, what I, what I was concerned about and want to talk about is on July 21st, June 22nd, revenue expense budget, actual all funds for 12 months, the unclassified total fund expenses was $87,000. That's what I'm looking at.
Where is that?
On page 95.
Of the audit?
No, of the Dune City revenue budget. I got this form here. We talked about, it was part for the budget committee and things like this. And I noticed that and.
I don't have that document. Yeah, let me see. Because I was worried about the $4,000.
That was the one I wanted to talk about, why we wanted to have a budget committee meeting in June, in July.
Hundix, this total? Okay, so did you go back and look at all the little different things were?
No, I just looked at that. I mean, I did, but that was in May, as of June. And I want to come back and have the budget committee talk about that, make sure they were classified and brought properly placed.
Oh, okay. But you're going to see one of these is $4,000. And that's because the checks that I wrote went through, and somehow the accountant sent. The checks that I wrote went through, and somehow, the accountant sent theirs through, and they came on the statement as having been honored, but neither one of us got more money in our account.
It might be that the Budget, Budget Committee might be more auditing the budgeting, but it should be budgeting.
Okay. That was a nightmare, and we still, apparently, haven't figured it out.
Okay, so we'll put that on the Budget Committee meeting. All right, D., short-term rental ordinance amendments.
No, it's not me.
Was that, was that my, was that my part of my letter where I, I'll make a motion? Or do I need to make a?
No, I don't think so, I think this was strictly from Sheldon saying, "I guarantee it'll be on the next agenda."
Yes, it was stated in another council meeting.
Because I, I, I made a suggestion to put on the meeting.
Yes, you did.
I wasn't, uh, I, I didn't want to put it as a motion, I wanted it as a discussion to propose that short-term rentals be, I gotta have the, where's my letter, I've not read it, because I'm, I'm fumbling too much right now. It was about banned properties.
Did we, were we, did I have the copy that I don't?
It was, it was in the package, I saw, I read it in the package, that's why.
It's defined short-term rentals as, as any residential property rentals of less than 30 days, ban short-term rentals on residential zone property.
Right. But I wasn't, when I sent that in, no one discussed it, with me, asked me what I wanted to do, otherwise I would have done, I would, if I put this on, you know, as totals, it would be, I knew it was on the agenda on Monday, but I know I made this a form of a motion after I talked to the mayor, who was talking about it. So, I decided to do that if that's what, if that's what this item's for. I have a hundred notes, and I lost my, my place because of all the notes for the practice that we've seen and all that stuff.
Is this something that the Councils want to talk about, or?
I'd like to post it and read it.
Okay. So, my motion would be to define short-term rentals as any residential property rentals of less than 30 days, and ban short-term rentals on residential zone property.
Yes, 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 yes.
Are we sending the ordinance again?
I didn't hear a second, so.
Okay.
Because it could be discussions and things of that sort, there was, so, my intention was that the mayor said it was going to be on the agenda, I don't remember seeing anything like that on the agenda for July, and so, I sent notes of things that we need to follow up on the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
There's a second, is there any discussion?
I just think there's more, uh, discussion, because I think the Attorney would need to be involved with discussions on this, but.
Well, I.
I, I think we're opening ourselves up for lawsuits that could potentially.
Well, then, I think we need to go back to discussion on that, because of the fact that we have citizens out here that are losing property value.
I.
They are losing their property themselves. We also have things that, you know, I have run up in the previous meetings, is subject systems. If they're running a commercial business, then they should be commercially zoned, and they should have commercial licenses.
Sure, we do. We're trying to hold a meeting here, thank you. Um, are we doing this permanently? Is it, is it a short-term deal, is it 30 days, is it 90 days, is it a year?
I would propose that we do a moratorium on it until we have clear definition that, um, we need to figure out what's going on, and we need to do it sooner than we need to do it later.
Rich, I, I agree, I, I understand what you're saying, because I, I know you're playing devil's advocate in the office, because it's a, it's a big thing, and I also know that we have all kinds of public hearings about this, or I know video conferences and things like that before I was Councilor, or was it just after that? And we talked about, it was part of this ordinance thing that we had, but short-term rentals were definitely part of that conversation many times, and.
Sorry, go ahead.
And we, we actually have done lots of research, but it looks like the research that we did was for, for rules and what, what other people are doing, but I don't think we did an adequate job of figuring out what the consequences were. And, and, and it wasn't till we were, we got real test, we hadn't asked for testimony before, we didn't really get any real testimony until, I think, Mayor June, and that's when, that's when things started rolling in. Because I, I know we talked about fees and if they're enough, and, and I know, I know that there was concern about the fees would be too much for people, because the idea was for the small homeowner who wanted a, who like snowbirds and wanted to get money while they were in another place, and nowhere did we really think about the idea of corporations taking up big, big houses and, and taking the whole neighborhoods over and things of that sort, and so.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Mr. Olson has an economic interest in the activity and has to recuse himself from discussion after the.
I think, I think he's, I think he's a commercial property owner, you know, I think it's residential, but I think, I think he's certainly allowed to talk about it. I, I have, I, I think he has great points, and there's other homeowners that have points too, but we, I, I brought this up because I know we need a discussion, and I wasn't, I, I made the motion, but I felt I wanted the mayor to attack this, and we didn't attack it. So, I want to ask, ask himself.
Ms. Mills, you're stating that because I own a commercial business that I am less than, that I should not be able to vote on this?
That's exactly right, and it's because at the current version does call it, uh, in a residential area, and you are in a residential area. It'd be different if you were zoned residential, but you're not, you're zoned commercial. So.
You just said I was zoned residential?
No, she said you're in a residential area.
The area is zoned residential. I believe you can still talk about it, but I don't think, you're, I, I don't know, I was, I meant to ask Ross that tonight, but I didn't want to do it in front of you.
Because I certainly value this voting, but.
Don't think you're going to hurt the record.
I, I value his input.
And I think he has a valid vote, and I know, I'm not sure, I'm sure that there's other people that might, I don't have a short-term rental, and I don't have, don't ever tend to it, I.
I'll, I'll, I'll save the question to the Attorney. Um, I will recuse myself from this, just to alleviate any potential problems. But they, but they need your side up too much.
Yeah, I agree. I'm done. I, I would, I would, could I change my motion to table it, and I'd like to have Mr. Orr here, Councilor Orr here, and I'd also like to have the, the opinion of who's, who's should be the accused.
Okay.
I think something needs to be done sooner than later, I don't know. When, when is our table date?
It would be next meeting.
For sure. So, next meeting, September, that's going to be the number one on the agenda?
I don't know if the number one, Jamie, does the agenda?
You, you.
You can change the agenda.
That's what she did this time, I'm telling you, because of what she did this time, she just called me and told me it was on the agenda. So, um, I don't know if it'll be number one, but it'll be on there, it's a date. Your whole business, yes.
I think it's being tabled too many times.
It has been, I agree.
Rory, would you please clarify that, the motion?
Why, why, we're tabled, but my motion was, I, I wrote it.
Well, you said two things.
Define short-term rental property of less than 30 days, and ban short-term rentals on residentially zoned property. So, I wanted to define it as a short-term rental, and then I wanted to ban that, that's, that's.
I understand that, you made that motion, and it was seconded, then I heard you say.
We had a discussion.
He wanted to change.
I said I'm willing to table it.
Okay.
So, we had a motion and a second to table this?
We have a second.
We have a table?
No.
Oh, we have not, I thought, so, okay, so, is there a second to table it? Here goes second, and we continue with the issue.
Well, we could call for a vote, because I have no discussion, but I, I, because I want agreement of all the councilors, at least, I want all the councils to be able to vote, I want to make sure that they're able to vote, I'm, I'm able to vote from my own motion, but we can still, there's, there's two others here that can vote.
So, Mr. Panen has requested a voice vote? So, Mr. Panen, no?
No.
There you go.
Can I mention our point of order? You, you made a motion, you seconded the motion.
After discussion.
It's still, it's still in place.
After, after discussion.
Has anybody denied?
What?
Did it take a vote on that motion?
This is us up here, so.
No, he's asking to amend his own motion.
I, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm asking to table it.
Okay.
For the reason, after the discussion, after the discussion, I think I need to table it, because I want to make sure all of the members have, have, have equal rights to vote.
There was no second to the table, so we go back to the original motion, and that's why I'm asking.
And the table is non-debatable, right?
Okay, so the original, so it's back to the original motion?
Correct.
And the original second?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I voted.
Those are still in place.
This is part of Robert's Rules of Order that we need control here.
And was it?
This is not public discussion, this is council discussion.
So, now, wait, thank you. We're waiting for the eyes.
Robert's Rules of Order.
Council President, I may get clarification on the vote that we're asking for right now, is that to table the motion or to continue the motion?
It's for the motion that Rory made to, on his.
To approve, to approve my, my motion, what specifically, the motion is to approve.
Was the last, last 30 days, and to ban it on residential property, that's a motion that was put on for, that's what you seconded, correct, and that is what the vote is on.
Okay.
And you're not.
Our morals are all on the same.
Yes, there's been a lot of things. So, that is a vote on the floor, and we're voting by councilors. Jamie?
Rory?
I just voted no.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Stanton?
I vote yes.
Counselor Mallon?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
I have to abstain.
So, there were two yes votes, and one nay vote, that Counselor Olson abstaining, and so, so that, the motion passes. Okay, so, then we go on to what we added was, E was water issues. So, Lawrence.
I have, I have concerns over the status of the, the water quality of what, the well-being plate. I know, I'm talking with many of the other water districts amongst, around, I should say around the well-being plate, a lot of people are having problems that are not only due to the fish screens that were mandated to be put on, but to the water quality in regards to reports being filed to the OHA, which is the organ health authority, if you all don't know that. So, I think we need to do some further diving down in regards to the, the quality of the water. We, every meeting, we go through this water quality report, but we have had nothing presented to us.
So, what's the motion?
And the motion is to, to do a study on the water, because there is questionable with the algae that is growing, and if the water is being reduced out of the well-being factor that the spring is feeding it, are we taking all this extra blue into our health? We have issues with fish screens on water districts, so the motion is, I want to get a, a study of the water quality.
So, who's going to do this, this discussion?
Okay, we have a, um, motion, and we have a second, so we have discussion.
So, who's going to do the study? I mean, I know that we have a, a water quality committee that hasn't been active because of, I guess, we could test kids, and it's for silicates, it's not for well-being.
No, it's, it was for both, the water quality committee did both, but they only test what the state of Oregon wanted them to test. It is not quality of the water for drinking, it was set up by the state of Oregon, so the actual drinking water quality is never tested.
I think that needs to be looked at.
So, so, I, I want to discuss it, I, I, no, I understand it's a problem, not local. So, if it's bad, what are we going to do? Is it, since we give people water rights, they, they, currently, they have to treat their own water, whoever gets that.
You would, yes, according to the rules, but is everybody doing that?
Well, then, if they don't treat it, are we liable for that or not?
That's what we need to discuss.
You see, that's why, that's one of the reasons why they're going to need to have a, a water system or a community water system, but, so, I, I don't, are we required, since we don't have a community system, and we allow people to take water out, we don't tell them what to use it for, right?
According to water rights versus water certificates, Sam said it's distinguished in the actual individual.
Yours, your water rights are different from the city's water rights.
Correct.
And yours, you are responsible under state law to treat your own water.
That's a question that, I, do I need to go down there to speak as a citizen at this point in time, or am I able to speak as I'm here?
You, you actually, you probably can't speak as, you have to speak as a counselor, because between us, it's not.
I know that there are questions out with OHA in regards to our current water system, if we, what we need to report versus not report. We've been defined as an organ, a small water system, which sets us in a completely different realm of a lot of the different associations around the well-being. There is too much, yes, you, but not you, yes, you, where is the fine line? Because OHA is not giving that definitive act, they're just saying, oh, verbal, well, I've talked personally to three different people from OHA, and they all have something different to say. So, many water systems are going through and doing this reported water testing, that to the fact is, not one of them can tell me what is required by the state for us to test, they all give something different.
Just.
We're wasting money.
I have the requirements, I have the regulations, I can share that with you.
The regulation and requirement is, is if you are servicing more than 15 people more than six months of the year, you're required to do X percent of testing, you're required to post that to all the people that are consuming that water, and you're required to test for irons, nitrates, you're required to test quarterly for bacterias, and it all has to be done by a licensed testing agent. So, why they're not telling you that this is what's required, I do it all year long.
I can tell you by talking to three different people from OHA, not everybody has reported to me as to what needs to be tested. We have the, the common three things, but then you have other ones wanting to put this to that. The statute that I read it just as soon as last thought, it was two to 14 people. I proposed that X vote to ban from OHA, and it has gone back and forth, because not all the, the houses in my, in my area have residents that are there year-round. So, it is hard for my little group of people to be according to this, according to that, according to this. So, therefore, when we're pulling the water quality, especially with the fish screens, I had two fish. I had two fish screens that killed one of my motors on my, on my system.
So, I-
So, that took, my, my, my biggest pump is now dead. And that's not at the fault of the people who have those water rights. Because if we didn't have anybody on a water permit, from what we're understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, we may not have to have fish screens.
Well, I, I saw it.
That's true.
The water's different.
So, the other eight people that are either on a water right, a DED and water right, or a water certificate, are now having jeopardy of their water and their health because of required fish screens.
So, maybe this needs to be addressed with fish and water rights.
That's funny you say that, because I did address that with Catherine Northall from the ODFW. And you know what she told me? Go right back to Jamie. And then Jamie says, no, it's an ODFW. So, where does a homeowner go?
Well, it's the court is where it goes.
But I can't get a hold of the water master, I can't get any definitive decision. So, homeowners out there around the Willkie are lost.
Your decision is one to be made by a court. You have to file an action with the court and ask for clarification.
Okay.
I, I know that, I know that, what's typically, what I was just looking at yesterday, you said that it's required to have fish screen because there will be X that you have to-
If you're on a water, you, you city water permit.
And see, that's the problem, they've got people who have a state water right that long pre-exist, everybody. And they have people on there that were forgotten, and not told to become part of it, and so now they have us, us Dune City water rights.
I agree with you that we're wasting money. I think everybody has an individual well, and individual, uh, systems are wasting money, because there's, there's economies of scale for centralized water system. And that's, that's one of the biggest issues that we should provide. I, I know that, I saw a letter here about Westlake and water sil, we don't have water rights in Westlake for silicates. All ours in Willkie. And we, as a city, needs to be providing a way to have a municipal water system, not just water rights.
But we have to have funding, and we're going to do that.
Well, and there's things like, well, I, I, I have ideas about it, but it's not to be discussed here.
I'm just saying that there are some legitimate health concerns.
I agree, absolutely.
Because in my personal thought, not speaking for anybody else, some fish screens that have been applied to the water systems and the pumps can actually cause detrimental changes to the water, which could affect somebody's health.
So, so my answer to that, unfortunately, is that you need to design an approved screen that doesn't cause, it, it, you might have to make a bigger screen or something like that, it's, it's all the design of the system that you're dealing with, and that's-
And those were made, and I'll tell you, I had two different sized screens, one of them that rusted completely and killed my, my pump. And we have gone through, I cannot tell you, thousands of dollars to try to find the problem. We never had this problem before, fish screens.
So, the question is, is now who's, uh, who's liable to replace the pump?
The pump, who's, who's liable to the cost of the diver that had to go down and do this on administrative request from Catherine Northall from ODFW? Uh, we want to know who's responsible for any potential health. And if we, as a city, are needing to be protecting of this, then we really need to know where the first base this is, isn't the status, the quality of our water?
Well-
It's another good quality reason with people that, uh, their wells all but go dry, because there's too much water being drawn out of the system this time of year, or they go brown. All, all the better reason to, uh, look forward to putting in a water system, because we're obviously not getting there, doing what we're doing.
I, I, there was an individual who was at last meeting, he forces, I don't have a water problem? Well, or, I don't have a water problem, but he else does. Well, he does have a water problem, because he has neighbors that have water problems. And silly things like somebody moving in and taking the, dropping the water gable down, and he has to end up drilling wells, that's probably happened to a lot of people. And so, we, as a community, have a water problem. I, I don't have a water issue, do you? Your neighbors have a water problem, so therefore you do.
Everybody does, and that's why I'm asking for it to be, let's start at ground zero, and let's check the quality of the water. If that is safe, then we know it's the issues that are coming out from the lack of maybe wells having issues, fish screens, lines, everything.
So, that goes back to the thing about the state of Oregon, they be testing silicates, or what was their, they just test-
No, that's, that's what, no, they don't test- It's not drinking quality, that's what the water committee was doing, was just what the state of Oregon asked us to do. It was not water quality for drinking water.
Like, it's your responsibility, it's not the city's. We have water rights, but we, I don't, that's, it's tough.
But we need to have a definitive, and if that be, like Jamie said, from the court, then-
I do know that Columbia County, where I came from, uh, they actually provided, uh, funding for people to take their water in, and they would tell you it was potable. As a test that they could do right there for you. Because that's really a potability test. And you could take, uh, you could take it out of your tap and send it as a potable. I mean, we, we are all supposed to do that, if we drink it, and we treat them for cells.
Army Water Services does that too, they test water.
I just had mine tested, it is potable, it's wonderful and fine, I had to deal with the bank company, and it worked out great.
Well, I, I think that's, but you see, it's, it was your responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility. Unfortunately, that's my understanding, I'm not an expert.
So, for the people that are having these issues, who's liable? Because I'm just going to speak for my group, we have a loss in a pump, we have water line issues, filter issues, tank issues now, because of the fish screens. Who's going to, we didn't, you know, the original people, the eight that are not on Water City or Dune City water permits, we didn't have to have the fish screens, but because we were told that they have to have a water permit through Dune City, we had to put these fish screens on.
Unfortunately, I, I would think that that would be something that your group's attorney would have to deal with in conjunction with finding out who's responsible.
I, I personally think these, if your money be better spent trying to find out a proper screen that doesn't cause you those problems with the problem design.
And I'm, I'm just speaking off the cuff, I, I don't know.
I do know that, um, the fish screens have to be cleaned at least twice a year, and maybe larger ones be-
You could give the-
Was, was that ever made work, everybody?
No.
So-
No, because I was, I called Fish and Wildlife about this issue, and that's the first, well, you have to clean them.
Okay, so, now you got the, uh, not only the expense of the fish screen, you got the expense of the wells, now you got the expense of a diver that has to go down and clean that every year, or every six months or whatever. You just made that water totally, uh, unfor-
I think, well, I think maybe, because it's required by Fish and Wildlife, because they have the law for that. Because they, they have, they said they wouldn't sign off for soft water rights unless we did that, that grant.
Right, we, we have a question next to it.
We need, I think you need to tell them that, what, what, I mean, I, I, it's, it's, it should be the city's problem. We'd only have to have one fish screen or two fish screens instead of a hundred straws of water, or a thousand straws. But, uh, until, when you're, if we're not going to pay for municipal water supply, you're taking the responsibility to pay for your water, and how you do it? That, that's my opinion.
But you're also speaking for a, a crowd that-
I, I'm speaking for myself.
Does not need to really have the fish screens. You know, when you're, when you call, when I call Catherine, she says it's Dune City's responsibility, and when you talk to Dune City, they say ODFW is responsible, so homeowners are lost.
ODFW is requiring it, it is state law. And in order, we have to comply with state law.
ODFW needs to be helping here, and they're not.
No, I know they're not.
The homeowners are at a loss.
Nope, they are not helping.
And the water issues are-
Unless you're asking a question to the city, city, are you going to come forward and sue them for us? Which, you know, could be a question that you ask. Right now, ODFW says it's your fault, because you have to do, you sign, you signed the agreement, did you?
Well, you didn't. We didn't.
You didn't, yours water doesn't, but your, those four people are, they're not just four, I don't have four, there's one that, there's, there's one that's getting water, it's not supposed to-
So, your, your water rights with the city, not with the city.
Correct.
So-
For part of.
For part of, okay. So, the ones that are failing, it, it's still, I mean, I, I'm all in favor, I, what, what, I think your, your motion is, you were talking about potability, maybe we ought to check and see if, if we can provide-
I want a motion as to, you know, check the water quality.
Well, again, potability is, I mean, I, I bet you they would say the water's potable in Willkie Lake. So, I, I also bet you that you would probably have to decide, each, each individual homeowner wants to check their potability. And when I was in Deer Island, I, well, I was responsible for the potability of my water. If it wasn't potable, I would have to either treat it or don't dig another well. And I know it's because of the, what's the screen, I'm not saying that, but, uh, Pete, uh, and the county just provide, just hasn't had its service, because they found a cheap way to have people test for potable water. And it, uh, because it, you'll, you'll have your next door neighbor who has a well water that might not be potable, because they have septic services. Well, she has a motion, that's, that's the discussion, I don't, I don't-
I put forth the motion for the water quality testing.
Yes, we threw the second in, and then a lot of discussion, and now it's up for a vote. All those in favor?
Nope, I, I guess, I, I got another question, is-
It's a cost of-
Huh?
I'm sorry, cost of question? Yeah, oh, you, you got it.
I guess is, is your water right regulated by Dune City?
No. But I'm speaking for many people around the Willkie.
Then, then why would Dune City be on the hook for paying the bill for a water quality test that isn't, uh, regulated by Dune City? You see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I have five, five neighbors that are regulated by Dune City, that are on my diversion points.
Quick history, neighborhood, they originally planned on the neighborhood all coming through this one's community system, but somehow the ball got dropped. So, now there are five people hooked up to this system, who thought they had a right to pull from the water, but don't. And so, the state's answer was, get a hold of Dune City, sign up for Dune City's water right. Well, they did that, and then the fish screen thing came down. And that's, it had to go on there, not because of the original people doing the thing, but because of these five people who had to sign up under us, because they were taking water illegally out of the lake. And that's the problem.
And the, and the state will give, give their water rights.
Right, and the state will not give them water rights.
They're not issuing any more water rights looking forward.
Hey, unless it's just a consumptive use thing, I don't know. But they have no way to, and so, the only way to rectify it at this point in time would be for those five people to put in their own system, which is also expensive.
Well, if I knew that we had, uh, five or four thousand dollars in unbudgeted funds, I might propose that we pay for potability tests for residents who want to take it. But I don't even know what that, well, if we have money for that, that's the only solution I could offer. And I, I would, I don't know if I would do that, I mean, I, I, it's not appropriate, I didn't come over doing it. It's a terrible problem. Terrible problem.
I just feel if there are more people than just my one little group that are having this issue-
I, I'm sure there are.
So, I worry about their welfare, their water quality, and their drinking.
I, I, I have a feeling that I agree with you, I have a feeling that if you, everybody that takes something out of, out of the system, even if they, the screens haven't failed, might have potability problems just from the piping of the plumbing, or, uh, they have septic tanks and the pipes that suck things in, it, it is a problem, that's why we need a water system.
I worry about the power system is the issue, that's my main concern.
Well, you're probably most likely to have it in Willkie than you are in Silkies.
Same across every year.
Same across the both lakes.
I guess we still have a motion, a second, does, are we going to vote on it?
That's what I was going to, and then you guys started discussing.
No, I'll put a question.
So, all those in favor of the motion on the table?
It's a question that's rich, that's a lot to try.
Potable, to test for potable water.
Required to test?
Yes, required, she's asking Dune City to test for potable water in Willkie. So, all those in favor? Right. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion does not pass.
I voted against something I for, and voted for something I against.
So, who's that?
I, I just want Wes to know that, that I, I didn't vote for it strictly because Dune City does not operate a water system, and we don't have the funds to do that. Not that I don't agree with your, your situation and everything that's going on, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. I just don't believe that, that Dune City is responsible for the action there. That's, that's the only reason I didn't, I didn't vote for you on that.
Right.
Because it's no different, no different than my system, or I'm a hundred percent responsible for my system, my testing, um, recordings, and everything.
Thank you. Hey, since there's no mayor, there is no mayor's report. Um, community center report, do you have anything to do with that?
Yeah, the women's bathroom has gone, gone down, the men's room's not far behind it, so we're going to have to have the plumber out again. Don't know what's going on.
And water quality report that I have on silicates is, um, that the temperature has gone up on the surface of the lake and due to the hot windless conditions that they have recently, and those are conditions for bloom, so we are checking for bloom to see if that occurs. Any road reports?
I, I, I don't have any road reports, but I know, uh, the last time I looked through it, I, there was a question about somebody living in a trailer on a property, so I'll have to pass that on to you.
Is that on Buckskin Dock?
On Hill Dock.
On Hill Dock now.
No, I don't, I'll give you the address, I'll tell you where it's at.
I was going to say, where on Hill Dock?
I have a, uh, Myroes Lakesport Drive, Lake Drive, and Ford Way are all without change, it's not something we can address right now, the overhangs and lots of odds. But I do have a concern driving in for two days now, there's a, appears to be a vacant vehicle out here on the road.
Yes, it's been reported.
It's been reported, thank you.
Yeah, that's a Lane County road, so I don't, I mean, I could put a seventy-two hour notice, Hawaii, our, our will tow it, but that costs the city money to do that, and it's a Lane County road, and they should, they can take care of it a lot better, and I can't-
Make sure that, can we follow up on it, and be the, the sort of, on the Lane County site, please?
Thank you.
Looks really perfect.
Okay, any other road reports?
Do we have trailers parked in the parking lot, is that our parking lot, or is that-
That is, it's, it's a road, it's a public road.
It's our public road?
Yeah.
And is it, I, I know that people, somebody thinks it's okay to do that, is that okay to do that after a week or two weeks?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, and I'm going to have to confer with the attorney, and that's the battle that most cities are facing with homeless people now, is that it's public road, so the public is allowed to do that.
Well, that's, that's a motorhome, there's also a boat trailer sitting out there.
Oh, I know, and they've gone canoeing, I watched them go out there.
The boat, the boat trailers-
I think they're just on vacation, but I'm not sure.
I think it comes down to the code enforcement, which we have difficulty with.
I, I just want to know.
I can put a seventy-two hour notice out there, I don't mind doing that.
I can put a 72 hour notice out there, I don't mind doing that. We do need to get a camera here at City Hall though, because I'm supposed to take pictures while I'm doing it, I can't do it alone, so that we can have somebody to testify that we haven't caused any damage to the vehicle while we were posting the notice.
So cellphone pictures will work?
Oh, cellphone pictures work fine, but Dune City didn't have a cellphone. We used to, but we don't.
Okay, any other road reports? Okay, anything for the good of the order?
No, go ahead, I'll call. I just have a question, proposed by some of my fellow residents, my fellow neighbors. The minutes from our meeting, are they not posted onto the website along with the videos?
Not till they're approved.
And how long, what is that time process?
Well, normally it's every month that it will approve, but we haven't had any. That's why there are so many on the agenda.
Because what's being reported to me, it's difficult to hear on the videos that are posted, so people are interested in having those minutes be, you know, continuously put on the website?
And we can't post them until you guys approve them. And you, I can't prove until you have a meeting.
So for the good of the order, it's very hard, as you, it's really hard to run a meeting. And one of the things about the agenda, you know, so I put these notes out about what things on the agenda, and I think councilors should be, uh, whole, things that sound very difficult. And I think in terms of the agenda order, we have the mayor's report at the beginning, at the end of the report saying, but the mayor doesn't vote or, he doesn't initiate motions, doesn't second them, and he only votes to break a tie. He, I'm standing here, I'm obviously man speaking, I don't know. So the point that I'm making is, I think that before new business and old business, the mayor ought to give a report saying, I've put these things on the agenda because I think these are issues and these are why. And then, if somebody wants to do it, then after we know the mayor, why, what he's doing or she or they're doing to set the agenda, then maybe it would be easier to make a motion for you to do that. Because you don't have, you know, you're a tiebreaker and it's difficult to run a meeting, but I would rather have at the start saying, this is the meeting, this is what we're doing, this is why I put these on here. And that's, that's my suggestion, you did a good job tonight, it's tough, didn't do too bad, that order anyway.
Anything for the good of the order?
Nope.
I have one thing for the good of the order, and that is, I would like to provide my heartfelt condolences to the people that have been affected by the mini fire. Maui and Blue River. And as I ponder these things, I was concerned about Dune City. We are, I'm reminded that the fires in Paradise, not only Maui and Blue River, it's getting hit for the second time in just a couple of years. I want to get the residents and the councilors thinking, what would we do if there is a wildfire like that in Dune City? I have gone down several Dune City roads, there was a lot of brush. Would our residents be able to get out if there was a wildfire? I don't know if they could. So it's, I'm very concerned about this. So I would like to ask Jamie if we could talk to the fire chief and get some facts on, I don't think our roads, the brush is cut back enough, but I need to find out the facts from the fire chief. And we need to figure out something, a safe way to evacuate residents from their homes besides jumping in the water like they had to do now. But that should be a secondary option, but I'm very concerned with these things going on, that that is a very real situation for us. And I would like to, everyone think about that, think about what we can do. And if we need to, we'll put a committee together or something, but I think that's very important. I think all the residents need to do what they can do, but I think part of it is, some residents might not be happy with it, but I think we're going to have to cut brush back harder than what we're doing now, and it will affect your property. And so, but I want to look into all that, I'm very concerned.
I think that's true. I would definitely appreciate that.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I just moved, I made the motion, move to adjourn.
All in favor? Bye. Thank you all.
Thank you. Time for the rest?
Eight sixteen.
Eight sixteen.
Right.